To your questions, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Honorable Prime Minister. And of course, the Prime Minister has very passionately articulated not just ongoing projects and ongoing development within the Salibey constituency and the Kalinago Territory and of course across Dominica, but also has spoken very clearly about future opportunities that in this community and across the island that we should take hold of. As indicated at the start, we are here to engage with you. At this point, we are going to open the floor for your comments and questions. We are going to open the floor for your comments and questions. I would like to request that to be orderly and respectful. We have a few roving mics, I believe, yes, and we have some of our officers who will assist. So I'd like to ask you to please raise your hands if you would like to be acknowledged to speak. The process that we'll follow will take about three or more, three to five comments or questions, and then we will have responses from the head table. So we are ready as soon as you are ready. So let me see some hands so that we can, we can come to you. Okay, so I see we have one, two hands in the middle row, the gentleman with the black hat, and then we have three hands here. So please stand, yes, and speak clearly into the mic.
Directly to Mr. Grant concerning the road. We observe the road is very thin. Is there going to be a second coat on the road? Or a colas?
Okay, thank you. So we'll take that first question regarding the, um, the road. We have a second question to the end, yes?
Good night. My question goes to straight to PM. My question is concerning KDF Bank. We all know we have an issue in the Kalinago Territory where most of us don't have the access to access that loan. As a supervisor of the NEP, I went to the bank for that loan and they turned me down. So I would like the PM to put something in place for the NEP workers when they goes to that bank so they could access to that loan. Number two person concerning NEP. PM, if you cannot give us a raise, we need a bonus for Christmas. PM, PM, it's not a joke. We have the Kalinago NEP have been going all along, north, east, south, and west, and they have been doing a very good job. So we need a thumbs up even you cannot give us a salary, a higher salary, but we need a bonus, please, PM. As you say, you love us, the Kalinago PM. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much. We have a third question in the middle, comments, yes? Please stand, thank you.
Good evening, everybody. I stand here to say thank you to the Prime Minister. I'm from Atkinson. And from since year 2000, our Labour Party is in office, we haven't seen anything tangible happening in Atkinson. The people from Atkinson, I think they have given up. They have taken a backseat because if we can remember the election from over 2,000 votes to 60 something votes, that is not a good sign. I thank the Prime Minister sincerely for giving us a little hope again and bringing us back to where we were before. What I would like to ask Prime Minister is whether he has a timeline when we can start to see something happening in Atkinson. Very much.
Okay, thank you very much. We will take one more question or comment for this first round. Okay, so let me recognize Mrs. Annette Sanford, the Kalinago Chief.
Yes, I'm happy to be here tonight because I believe that such discussion is about community development and an area where we can voice our concerns and also give all compliments if we have to. So tonight I have quite a few questions, but I'll try to be brief. First, we have the Public Works and we appreciate the new road, of course. And I believe that people like me who have been working very hard and paying our tax, we deserve a good road to work with four good shoes. And, um, and then the question I have is recently we've been having some setbacks with a request that we made through the Kalinago Council Office. We requested that the last few bus stops that are left be designed to reflect our traditional culture. I know that this, um, that we came in late when the project had been started already, but when I wrote to the PS, Land Slott, he did give me confirmation that he was, um, he will go for the design because we were asked to submit a new design. And we did all of that with the help of a few interested people. And, um, we, the, the project is still continuing without our request. Recently, which is just yesterday, I had a meeting with the road manager and it was very heated because the, the project will continue no matter whether we request it or not. And I, I really feel strongly about it because it's only three, about three bus stops left and I don't think it will cost too much to be able to at least have these three last bus stops which are situated strategically by the escalated share, the point to the Baron Ote, particularly if we are talking about tourism and wanting a little bit more for the tourists to, to see our traditions and culture. I would really like the Minister of Public Works to look into that first, please. Secondly, um, my question is healthcare cost. Healthcare is very expensive for indigenous people. Most of them who go to the hospital oftentimes cannot afford it. I guess you know all the background already on, on why most of them cannot afford it. Um, I have, I know a person who is currently home, sent back from the All Forward because he couldn't do his surgery and he is at home. So what measures are in place for the Kalinago Territory in terms of meeting the cost of healthcare? Secondly, we look at agriculture. I saw a fly about $100,000 invested into the boat industry. I would like to find out how was that money spent and, um, where, well, how was that money spent? Because we have not, I've not seen any fishermen in the community or any improvements in the fishing industry within the Kalinago Territory. And lastly, um, I have another concern about the respect for the office of the Kalinago Chief and the council. I will just give an example. I received a letter yesterday confirming my attendance at the groundbreaking ceremony to give a welcome remark. And then I was also asked to submit my welcome remarks prior to going to give my welcome remarks. I find that a little bit disrespectful and I would really like you, Mr. Prime Minister, to to really have a little more respect for the Kalinago Chief and Council. Excuse me? It came from the Ministry of Environment. I have the letter with me, do you want to have a look? Before I give you the letter, one more. We know of the building of the Sinequa Primary School. I, I visited there recently. Um, last year for the first term of the school year, we had an incident where one of our young men happened to get into some altercation and stabbed another student. He was placed on suspension for quite, well, we don't know, he, he doesn't have an end. We don't know. We haven't had any feedback from the school exactly when that suspension is going to end with no follow-up with the student and so on. We've made several requests to meet the, the principal and the school and to have a meeting with them, and they keep telling us that they were given instructions from the ministry not to interact with anyone unless the case is heard. I would also like to find out, would policies be looked at, putting policies in place? Will there be policies put in place to address bullying to our indigenous students at our secondary school?
Okay, thank you very much. So I will invite the Honorable Prime Minister to respond to the questions.
Well, the, I'll start with the last, last point. I mean, I, I would caution against anyone giving the impression that, that bullying is all, bullying, bullying is only attached to Kalinago children. Bullying is a national issue, a global issue. So let us not, let us not make it a issue of ethnicity or race and so on. This is, this is not, this is not true at all. I mean, um, you know, so it is a issue that, 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 that governments and institutions the world over are seeking to address, especially with the advent of social media and, and everybody now is going on Facebook and saying what they want and doing what they want and attacking people and those things. But it's also important that we condemn these things at all levels and from all, um, sectors of the society. And so it's important that we, we, we do that. The issue of your welcome remarks, certainly, I don't want you to give or anybody to have an impression that that came from the Prime Minister or any minister. That's not government's position whatsoever. So I don't know who would have told you to give them a remarks. Anybody who would have told you to give them remarks in advance would be out of order. And so this is not a, a government position. If somebody, if I am at a function and somebody says something, I can respond myself. I don't have to have a written speech to respond, to respond to anybody. So I don't think, so I am not sure where that came from. And that is not, and I would, I would suggest to you that you do not make available to anyone, if you, if, if you, if you so decide, anybody, but anybody from the government who asks you for this speech, you're not obligated to give to them because this is not a government position. I have never heard that happening. Okay? So, so this is not government position whatsoever. Um, the issue of healthcare, you know, as a nurse, that the government provides free healthcare to people 60 and over and 18 and young. If somebody comes into the hospital and is admitted from the accidental emergency or you're referred by your, by a district medical officer and you get admitted into the government public health system. So the average surgery will cost you from the government fees about between 589, 580 and between 880 dollars. What is happening at the hospital and which I believe people need to talk about is that doctors charge the patients privately. So you move from a 580 fee to a 15,580 fee. And I can tell you, because I did this on the government behalf, I have had to approve literally hundreds of thousands of dollars to pay for private surgeries when those surgeries ought to be done in the public health system, utilizing government facilities, government nurses, government staff, and so on. So that is what, that is what may have happened to your Kalinago resident, where he or she got into the hospital ostensibly may have referred to by, um, the district medical doctor, got admitted into the public health, and therefore that, that patient is a public health patient and that patient should be subjected to public health fees. And I think that, I think that, I think that we talk about honest conversation in this country as to what are the challenges that we are confronting in the health sector in Dominica? And then we get the blame for it. Well, you know, I get the blame for it because one man, one person they call scary. And so, um, if I believe, if each of us were to respect the procedures at the hospital, we would not find healthcare prohibitive to many citizens. And this is a challenge. And you, all of you know it, you've, you've experienced it, many of you have experienced it. And so why, why you, I'm not talking to necessarily you here, but the country, why you remain silent? Why, why don't we speak about those things publicly? About our experiences? And in these days, the practice of medicine has changed. Unless you don't show a doctor the money, nothing happens to you. So unless you show him the money, nothing happens. But I would like to know of this particular case and to see how we can facilitate that person to access the medical intervention that he or she requires. Um, the issue of the request bus stop, I think that's a, I cannot give any commitment to this. A contract has been signed. This is an international contract financed by the World Bank. There are protocols and there are, there are processes. There were, there were a number of opportunities during consultations on this project because a requirement by the World Bank is that there must be public consultation. So I'm not sure what happened at the public consultation, but so I cannot say that I can give instructions to change the desire at this stage because I am, I am, I don't think I can do so unless it is going to be cost variations and I need to be advised on the legal and financial implication of that decision before I can give any comment on this matter. But I'm just saying that at this stage, it is going to be very difficult because if you realize all the variations we make, we made, we had to pay for it and stick to the costs. And so I, um, I, I am not aware of this. I'm hearing it tonight, but it's a matter for the Minister of Public Works and the Minister of Finance to, to inquire about this thing and to see what, this maybe, this maybe could happen if the contractor is amenable to that request, providing that it is within the cost estimate. So if there's a cost estimate of 20,000 for bus stop, if the redesigning will fall within that 20,000, then there may be a consideration. So we need to be advised on what is the cost variation for that because it's not straightforward. If it's government money and government contract, I could tell you tonight we could change it. But there are, these are externally financed money, even if it is a loan, we still will follow the procurement processes and the contractual and legal obligations of that particular matter. Atkinson, Dudes, I will be in Atkinson, I believe, on Wednesday, the sixth, so we can put things in place to commence this housing project and to assist some of the other residents on their private properties. But some of the issues that we have in Atkinson is the issue of land ownership. So there are some people who I know that I have approved to build on the, on the lands, but the land do not belong to them. And so there are some issues there that we need to address, on people's individual lots. But insofar as the land that we acquired, you will see me on Wednesday next week to, to move the commencement of that project. My dear sister, friend, I, I agree you guys were hard, you know? I, I, I love the NEP and it's not NEP, it's NEP, eh? Thank you very much. I, I mean, I mean, the vast majority of NEP communities, they do a fantastic job and it's not easy work, but it's important what you're doing to enhance the communities, keep the communities beautiful, beautiful and clean. And I, I drove on the Hossback Bridge this afternoon and, you know, it was really a wonderful drive and it's hard work. So I will, I will have to take that question in chambers and so on. So I will, I will have to look at that, a little bonus at some point for those who were engaged in the beautification. Um, in respect to the Kalinago Development Fund and they're not allowing NEP, I will change that decision. I will ensure that it is included in revised cabinet decision Tuesday. Um, so the aid bank, because it's, it's government money, government guarantee. So the aid bank can set their own rules. We will set the rules for the aid bank in respect to that. And on Tuesday in cabinet, we'll change that. So you, you can benefit from this particular source from the aid bank. Actually, why the aid bank telling you that anyway? But I guess. Um, the, Mr. Frederick, on the road, I will consult with the Public Works on this. Um, I, I know they, they couple, Grant, you, you want to speak to that, Grant? Give some information still? Yes, yes, Grant has more information on that.
Good evening again. So the road, we have a two-inch asphalt base and we have a 16-inch sub base using tarage compacted. We recognize that there are some defects along the road that we are discussing with the consultant engineer. So we have to redo, basically rip up some colas and redo it, the asphalt area. So I think that are some of the areas that you might be speaking to, sir. So, so we'll have a discussion, Mr. Frederick, and then we'll look at it. To Mrs. Sanford, Kalinago Chief, um, we have, we have done so repeatedly in the past where we have respectfully asked persons do not engage with the contractors. The government is the client and the contractors cannot make modifications without the express approval of the government. And from time to time, we have the contractor saying that persons are requesting driveways, persons are requesting retaining walls. Each variation the contractor makes, it adds a cost to them, which in turn they bill to the government. So as you would have heard, in December, we had variations exceeding $100 million. So at this stage, I do not think that it would be possible. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Very engaging conversation so far, very good questions, and we've been receiving the responses from the head table, the Honorable Prime Minister and Minister Grant. So we have an opportunity now, I'm sure there are others who would like to speak or you have any questions or other comments. Let me see your hands. Okay, we have the young lady here and then we have a second gentleman on this side. Okay, so we have three hands for now. Go ahead.
Hi, PM, can you see my face? Do you want me to come at the front? So good night to everyone and good night to my boy and her correspondence. I know I'll get it very early tomorrow morning. Um, PM, my question, well, clarifications first. I wasn't at the inauguration of the Kalinago Chief when, um, that ceremony. However, I've been getting feedbacks from Kalinago residents claiming or even basically coming to me for clarification whether or not the Doasko bill was covered or negotiated by the Kalinago Chief and Council or by the government of Dominica. That is clarification, I am not sure. So that's the information. So I want to know who negotiated for the $1.4 million to be cleared? Was it from the Kalinago Chief and her council or was it the cabinet paper that was done previously to even the election itself? So I want that to be clear because I want to be sure I don't hear people say, well, it's the Kalinago Chief that say it's clean. And for me, if that is the case, I would just figure out, well, best we don't have the Kalinago Chief to just rule the whole place. And I'm pretty sure that is not, that is not the case. So I would like clarification. So everyone here tonight will get to know the truth. I want that to be clear. Second, um, in reference to the healthcare, I would like to, um, inform everyone that although we may not be able to pay off all of the bills, and I'm saying although we, as if I'm part of the government, but I would like us to know that for the past three months, the office of the Prime Minister has covered $246,000 in medical care for, and that is what I know. And sometimes we don't know it. So for me, for example, PM, I gave you a lot of blows. I say I don't see no need of the, for the rapid response, um, for a unit. But when you are in the situation and you see you need to get a child out of Dominica urgently, that is when you see the need. Okay? So we have here tonight Mary, Mary James, may I raise your hands? That's Mary James. And Kenny Valmont is in Trinidad and I would like to say thank you on his behalf. Um, PM, for clarification again, Mahor River doesn't get anything. Golet River doesn't get anything. I just want to be clear. Are you saying that we are going to get the housing scheme in Mahor River? Um, and, um, and lastly, I would like to say thank you on behalf of my aunt, she's right at the back, Auntie, raise your hands, for the World Bank house. And I believe sometimes we just get the house, you know? We don't, we don't pay for it. We don't, we'd have to pay $500 mortgage at the end of the month. So we just figure out it's free. But it might be free to you, but it is not free of course to somebody else. And I know tonight making that statement and my boy and everybody looking at me, I will be getting it tomorrow, but I think fairness, all fairness due. Thank you very much. Yes.
All right, thank, thank you very much. So we have a few questions from you. We, there's a gentleman, yes, can you please stand?
Thank you very much. My question has to do with education and I think I would like to propose, propose beginning a dialogue about a secondary school for the Kalinago Territory. I say beginning a dialogue because that takes time. I think, um, we, let me share a little bit about a discovery I made whilst doing a research on, on the four people. It has to do with an indigenous community in Latin America and the community had problems and they wanted to revive the community. So the leaders got together, they decided that the best thing to revive that community was to build a school in the, in, in that community. They did build a school and the community came back alive and very much so, I think we can take some, some wisdom from that example, that if we have a secondary school in the Kalinago Territory, and if I may say, the Sinequa school could be that, you know? We could start there. And it could provide, of course, education and employment opportunity for some because we have college graduates who could be teachers there and some of them can, can a teaching job in that secondary school. So once again, I, I would really love if we could begin a dialogue on secondary school for the Kalinago Territory.
Thank you. We have someone in the middle with their hand up. I don't know if they changed their mind, but okay, so we have hand up to the back. Go ahead. Oh. We'll take you next.
Good evening, everyone. Well, I came with my sole intention to address the Prime Minister in relation to Atkinson, but I heard dudes ahead of me and I, I wish to thank you, Honorable Prime Minister, for the words that I heard, that the encouragement that you gave to Atkinson people because as dude said, we are, look, look like the, the forgotten ones. So because after hurricane, houses will build all over and not one in Atkinson and we really need people in Atkinson with the horse as well. So thank you very much for the words I heard. I heard you'll be in Atkinson and I'm hoping to see you then. Other pertinent issues I have, I think because I'll be seeing you on Wednesday, I'll be able to talk to you directly. So thank you very much. I appreciate your visit to Atkinson and we will let you know how we feel. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. So there's a, yes, there's a hand at the front. Can you take the mic to her?
Let me say good evening and welcome to the PM and his cabinet. And it's a privilege to have you all among us this evening and we do appreciate it. And PM, I just want to say thank you and congratulations for what you have already done in the territory and what you will, what you will
and what you will, what you will continue to do for us in the territory. But a few concerns, you mentioned the road and which we, we are very happy, I am happy myself because I drive, so I know the difficulties that we faced, and I am happy now that the road is almost ended and we have good road we can travel on, and we, yes, as you said, we will be having a lot of visitors in the Calinago Territory. Um, one of the things though, when we will be having a lot of visitors and they'll be coming to see, um, our tourism sites, we have the Barana Ote and we have different sites that they need to come in and see. My question to you or the tourism minister, if he or she is around, is what assistance can be given or will be given to develop our Calinago tourism industry? We do not have a tour, a Calinago tour for the Calinago Territory, and this is something where we have to look into. But in order to, to, for, to have more visitors come into the territory, we need to develop our, our tourism areas. The Barana Ote, a lot of people comes to visit, but there are a lot of things that need to be done. Money need to be invested into the Barana Ote, there are a lot of developments that need to be done there. Um, we have, we call it, this is the only area, more or less, that you can, you have, um, the Calinago culture. But when you come down there, how would I say it? If you buy a meal, you will not get a Calinago meal. The crafts, yes, we need to have people on site, but we need finance in order to do that, because it is difficult for the little craft that the people are making in order to generate it, in order to expand bigger. So we are asking for assistance from the government in order, when it comes to funding, to, to enhance our Barana Ote. Also, where there are other sites that need to be developed, we have the Escalated Shear and other areas that have not yet been developed, but they need to be developed. In order for us to make the Calinago Territory as a tourism site, we need to, we need investment and we need the tourism sector to assist us, the ministry, the government, whoever it is to assist us in this area. Agriculture, I am not sure, I, I keep hearing that, um, you know, money is invested into agriculture to help farmers, to help individuals, I am a, a single farmer myself, and I, I, I believe a hundred percent from farm to table, whatever you grow, you eat, and I believe that. But in order to, for us to develop and to do it on a wider scale, we also need assistance. And I will tell you from my personal experience, I have three workers, four workers, I pay them from my pocket, right? There's only one, I have one from the NEP and I'm very grateful. He gives me three days a week, but I pay him the other three days for the rest of the week and my other workers. I pay them from my pocket, I buy my fertilizer, I buy everything. There was a program going on for agriculture where you could give, we could get, um, for that banana planting where we could get fertilizer. Nothing came out of it, and it is hard and difficult for us, for me as a single person and as a single woman and, and self-employed, in order to generate income, to sustain my farm. I pay my workers, I have to buy everything else in order, my plants, my seeds and everything. So I am asking what it is that the government have, or what can you contribute in order to make it easier for us in order to have better yield and expand our, our agriculture produce? Also, another, um, concern I have in the territory, when it comes to security, our police, we do not have a, a transport at the police station. You make a report and the police will tell you, there isn't, we do not have a transport for us to come and see what is your problem. One police is there and will tell you, I cannot leave because I'm alone in the, in, in the police station. Or they will ask a civilian, can you please watch over the police station for me, in order for me to go to work? This is ridiculous, it is, and something need to be done when it comes to security in the Calinago Territory. We are a wide area, it is, the, the Calinago Territory is not a little, little place, it's a large area, and something need to be done about this security for the Calinago Territory. Okay. All right, I will pause my quest, my, 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 for now, and I'll continue later, thank you.
All right, then, thank you, so we have an exhaustive list. I would, um, like to give the Honorable Prime Minister and the other members of the head table an opportunity to respond at this time, thank you.
You'll say a few words. Well, on the question of tourism, the Minister of Tourism will, will say a few words, and of course, on agriculture, the Minister of Agriculture will share with you, um, some insights on, on some of the support that we provide to farmers. The issue of, um, Maho River, as you know, there, there is a fault, um, in Maho River. There are some of the homeowners who have said, it's okay, we can fix the homes to them, um, but we are concerned about the fault. Um, so this is why, this is why we did not mobilize materials for that particular housing scheme. So we need to, we need to have a, a further conversation on this. Um, there's a, there's a fault going across the Calinago Territory, um, you know, um, and somewhere we're, we're going to study very carefully, so this is why we have not, um, provided materials on that, um, housing scheme site. The issue of the, of the, um, secondary school, I mean, the, the question, my, my dear father, brother, is how many children we had in the Calinago Territory born last year? A lot, really? I mean, I mean, it's, it's a conversation that we can have, a dialogue as you say, and I would certainly, I would certainly like to join the dialogue, because while, while having your own secondary school might be an aspirational thing and maybe something that may be good, we also have to be pragmatic. Um, the reality is, will you, will you be able to get sufficiently trained teachers? In, of, of course, really, trained teachers in all these disciplines? Um, whether you have enough students, perform, per class? Um, so you, so let us be careful, I mean, I, I'm thinking it might be easier for you to ask for the extension on the Calinago Territory Newcastle branch and own the Castleboro Secondary School than, than to, than to build one just for you here. You'll have, you'll have a challenge, but I think we can have a conversation on this, as you say, and to explore the thing, but, but, but it is something that you have to be, be mindful of. Um, the reality is school populations are dropping, and, and unless there is a surge in, in, in births, then to sustain the school and the numbers, you'll have a challenge. I mean, you just have to look at, at the secondary school, at the primary schools, how many children are sitting in national assessment exams? Many of the primary schools, the reality is, if we're to look at this thing objectively, and I don't want to be able to misunderstand or misinterpret what I'm about to say, if you're to look at this thing very objectively, there are number of, of teaching positions that we do not need because of the size of the classrooms. What we have, what we have done over the years is to have now multi-grade system, and in some schools, some primary schools, you have two teachers in a classroom with five children. The ratio of student to teacher in Dominica is, is far better than most developed countries, um, because of the population and because of the fact that we want to maintain, we want to maintain primary schools in particular in the villages as far as practically possible. There are some communities that will effectively close themselves, the schools will close themselves because of the dramatic drop in, 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 um, in number of children in preschool, primary school. So, so you need to look at the, at your source market, primary school in the Calinago Territory, and to see how many children are in the, are in the primary school and what ages, and what is the, what is the, um, registration rate in the last ten years? What, what do the, what do these numbers say? So there's, there's some empirical data that we need to study for us to have a, a very mature and objective conversation on this. The issue of, um, of security, I, I, you know, I do not know the particular issue of the vehicle um, in the Calinago Territory, I know the chief told me that they will be providing them on his own, but part of the problem we have with vehicles generally in the public service and the police in particular is that they march up faster. I know the police can't drive away, I mean, I thought it was the, um, the, the, the standard that we get automatic, the same thing. But, but the chief is here and, and is fully aware of the issue, and whatever support I can provide, I, I will provide to them to, to address the issue. But I, I don't think that it is, it is envisaged that there'll be one police officer at, at this station at any given time. So, so that's something that, that the chief has taken note of. My, the final point about, um, the water rates, um, not, the board of, the, first of all, the general manager of Doasko is not empowered to, to waive any rates in Dominica. The, the board is not authorized to do so, especially after we introduced the new rates, made it clear to everybody that outside of the cabinet, only the prime minister can waive any rates in Dominica. Because Doasko has managed itself properly, has to collect as much as possible. We recognize that the Calinago Territory was in a particular situation, and we decided to waive, um, or waive, um, about two point three million dollars of outstanding rates. So, so there's nobody outside of the cabinet who could have authorized that, nobody. People can have conversations, but the ultimate decision is that of the cabinet, and so not even Doasko can do that. And if Doasko does that, the management will be fired, by me, not by the board, because they have to manage it properly and ensure that the college rates to pay their bills so that we don't see an increase in water rates for anybody again, and so we're very clear on this. Um, so, um, but the reality is, if anybody want to take credit for it, it's okay with me, I mean, the point is, we, we doing what we have to do and we continue what we have to do. Um, I think these are the issues you raised at me, and you, you made the point about the rapid response and the so-called red clinic. And I'm happy that you pointed out that some people in the country who have criticized this not understanding the importance of it and the impact it has had and continue to have on people's lives. We are placed on earth to help people, is that everybody who will have the means of taking care of themselves? And the Bible tells us that we have to be our laborers' keeper. And so for me personally, I do not only believe that we have a political responsibility to people, but we have a biblical responsibility. And as difficult as it gets sometimes for the government to sustain the programs that it has, it has in place, we have maintained those programs because we understand our greater responsibility and we understand how important it is to people. So you will hear people say, well, why don't you cut the NEP by fifty percent and put it in tourism or put it in agriculture, put it in infrastructure, put it in this, put it in that? But these are people sometimes who don't understand the impact of it on, on individuals, and what does it mean to people? What does it mean to the poverty level? What does it mean to the people able to take care of their families? And so it is a difficult situation to sustain, and the amount of money we spend on healthcare nationally locally plus to facilitate people going overseas for, for specialized treatment is huge. Um, and you pointed out that's, that's from your facilitation, because I know that you took charge of a couple, or two or three people from the Calinago Territory and you prepared the documents for them and you facilitated them through, that just through you, two hundred and forty six thousand dollars were approved. And that's just the tip, as a drop in the ocean, the extent to which we have, we have assisted people. People tell us we should not give homes to people, or they should buy it, or we should sell it to them. I agree to that to a certain extent, but the reality is, if I were to, if I were to sell a house to one of the families there in the, in the Calinago Territory, would they have the means of paying the government back? And if they have the means, how long would it take them to pay the government back? Outside of you being a public officer or on the establishment, the private sector. And so it is a, it's a, it's a balancing act the government has to engage itself in, but it is not easy. We do not complain because leaders must not complain, leaders must find solutions to problems, and that's what we have been doing. Um, but it is not easy at all to sustain those investments. And in a country like Dominica, which is a situation in most Caribbean countries, governments carry the, the, the bulk of the responsibility. And this government has gone beyond its remit, the remit of any government, because the government has four responsibilities. Basic education, this is why at eight sixteen you will be sent home from school. Basic healthcare, that is, you go to the health center, you get, to see a nurse. Beyond that, you have to pay, basic infrastructure, that is why our roads were narrow, that's why our bridges were one lane, basic, to get to the one point to the other. And security, four responsibilities. This is why governments never spent money on housing, this is why governments felt building water to every part of the country and the cost of it with no return, they never did those things. To spend six point five million dollars in, in, on the Calinago Territory for water, on top of what we spent, we spent about three point four prior to the hurricane, you'll never make the money back. You'll never make, no matter how much you charge, you'll never make the money back, alone at six percent interest. To pay the money back, you'd have to charge, you'd have to make about eight or ten percent return on your investment. And, and, and there's a politician talking, I want no businessman, no banker, that's, that's applying common sense to this thing. And so when we see these things happening, I believe that we have to appreciate those things. Because it's not, it's not that the government has money sitting there, doesn't, doesn't know what to do with it. We have to be juggling sometimes and to ensure that we can meet the needs of our people as much as possible. Similarly, for example, garbage collection, nobody pays for garbage collection across Dominica. But you go to Guadalope and you go to San Lushan, you go to other parts of the Caribbean, people pay. People pay, and so I want to thank, um, the chairperson of the council of Atkinson and my friend, nice to see you and I look forward to seeing you on Wednesday when I come, so you can talk about other issues, but thank you for your criticism, thank you very much. Um, tourism and agriculture.
Good evening, everyone. I'm very excited that you asked a question about tourism, so I can share with you all the wonderful investments we are making in the Calinago Territory from since twenty twenty four. Um, Gwen is here, so she can attest. We actually have about thirteen projects we have identified, we did a tour, the Ministry of Tourism, we came up to the Calinago Territory, we were joined by the council, and last, in twenty twenty four, we did a tour. And we identified about thirteen sites and projects that we want to develop to give you the opportunity to gain revenue and to make money and income under the tourism industry. Because as PM rightly said, the Calinago Territory is a gem because of your unique culture and heritage and is experience that every visitor around the world would want to experience, so we have to help you. First, we have to upgrade your products and give you, help you build capacity so you can take advantage of these opportunities, but we have started the process, so I'll give you an update since I realize you're not aware of all what is going on. So we, we have Basin Uba Pond, and if I say the road wrongly, Cozelle will correct me. Basse Uba Pond, Les Escalated Shear, Basin Totozi? Basse, sorry, Basse Totozi, Lover's Pool, Centipede Trail, the nineteen thirty war memorial site, we have the waterfall, we have the KBA roof project, Horseback Ridge, Charles Warner Pool, the German cemetery and the segment of the YT, the YT Kubolee National Trail. So on the Escalated Shear upgrade, we have started, work, in fact, work was recently completed on the platform, we did new railings and we also redid the steps. And interestingly, um, I think the contractor completed the work about a week ago, and on Monday, I received pictures of damages to the new gazebo we just completed, the platform. So I want to encourage us as a community, these investments are quite costly, it was a sixty six thousand dollars contract, and it was an opportunity to improve that site for better access for visitors and to make it safer. But imagine you're making an investment and before you get an opportunity, it is already destroyed. So I really want us to come together and own those community projects and protect all the investments that the government is making for you to take advantage of opportunities in tourism. The, the Lover's Pool, the access steps to be enhanced, um, to provide easier access, so that project, we, um, we hope to start soon. The nineteen thirty war memorial assessment was conducted, we have to do a second consultation and finalize estimates, and we hope to commence work on that soon. The KBA, as you know, the ABA was severely damaged by hurricane. The K B A, as you know, the A B A was severely damaged by Hurricane Maria. Um but we have started the process of re-taching the roofs. So I think it's about eighty percent complete M P S. We've done the kitchen and the main building, so hopefully one that is complete. I agree with you. The Kalinago experience has to be very unique and different at the K B A. And so we have started to have conversations about what tour packages we want to have. We had a group from who came to Dominica from Travel P R London. And when they arrived at the airport, the first stop we took them to was the K B A. And they had a marvelous time. They dressed as a Kalinago for the day, some of them got Kalinago names, they partook in a Kalinago dance. And they said to us, that was the best experience ever in any island. And that every visitor should be able to book a Kalinago tour. So we had this cluster project, which was about a one point one million dollar investment, which we recently comple- completed. And so you also have a Kalinago website, you have your very own website. So as we upgrade the sites, what we'll be doing is coming back to have a meeting with you, the council. And the tourism groups and all of you are interested to help you create packages. We currently have a consultant on island who will be visiting you because you're very unique and special, so you get special attention. As you know, you have the Kalinago pillar, and so all these um projects I mentioned, about five of them are ongoing. I don't want to take up all the time, but at least five of them are ongoing and the work is continuing. And we hope by the by the end of the year, we'll be able to officially launch the website with all the upgrades. And the new packages so that more visitors can enjoy the Kalinago space. Thank you very much.
Good night, everyone. Um happy to be here, of course, and thank you for your question on agriculture. That gets me real excited because I get the opportunity for me to discuss some of the important issues. But to be specific, I'm to your question. I just realized maybe your issue, we had a program or we have a program where we support farmers with planting. And banana tissue culture plants. You may have not been a beneficiary, the reason why you were not um supported with fertilizer. And but I can always deal that on the side. But having said that, um we invested and we 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 procured actually thirty thousand tissue culture planting and banana plants. And fifteen thousand planting plants we've imported from France. And from our reports, they are doing very well and they're sort of tolerant to and for now of the black secret talker. But the good news is, um that would have been the last time we've imported, we will be importing. Plants that are tissue cultured because we've invested eleven point two million dollars in a tissue culture lab. At one mile, where we are already producing and propagating tissue culture plants. For example, we have done dachings and we're now we're in the Charles stage. We are now analyzing the protocols for the plantings, bananas, um sweet potato and pineapples. So we can do mass propagation to provide to farmers. And that would be clean planting material. And the lab has a capacity of about five hundred thousand plants annually. So that's a big boost for production um in in Dominica. As on my feet, I want to quickly mention some other investments that we are having, um which is currently ongoing. We are constructing a national abattoir for over six million dollars. And not just building the abattoir for six million dollars, we are providing livestock farmers and we have beneficiaries in the Kalinago territory as well. With building materials to construct resilient pens at about seven point nine million dollars as well. So we're not just focusing on the processing part, we're also looking at supporting farmers to provide the birds. And the pigs to the abattoir so that we can have production to reduce our our inbound bill. Recently, we also signed a contract of over seven million dollars for a brand new citrus certification facility. What that will do is help us supply farmers with clean citrus planting material. Because we know we have been suffering with chystis virus and a grinning disease. So that facility will enable us to provide you all with clean plant material. But as we are doing that, in one mile, we are propagating about hundred thousand citrus plant. So by the middle of this year, we'll be able to supply farmers with at least fifty thousand. And by the end of this year, we'll do the second fifty thousand. So all that is happening in the sector and the Kalinago territory is not excluded from it. And I would say for the citrus part, for example, well, my officers would say the Kalinago territory is not suitable for for citrus. I don't think so because of the elevation, you know, so we'll change the norm. And people from here will be provided with with citrus plants by mid of this year. Because we're looking to revamp the the citrus industry because there is huge potential for the export of citrus. And of course, for food security and to tackle the C N C Ds the PM mentioned early on. Just before I leave, um my minister for Dexia is right there, we also established a procurement facility of five million dollars. Where Dexia is purchasing fresh produce from farmers and paying them within three days maximum. Two to three days maximum. And what I mean, so far, we've expended about almost three million dollars from that, purchasing from from farmers. And we've seen already increased production and establishment because of that. For example, Dexia, last year, June to July. The sales of 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 plantings only increased by about a hundred percent from what compared to the two previous years. So that's the impact that facility have already have on the planting and banana subsector. And we know the Kalinago do a lot of agroprocessing, where they do with the cassava, etc. We have a project on the agroprocessing component of about over three million dollars. We are going to purchase equipment and stuff for the processors so that we can increase the food safety issues we are having. On some of the establishment, and that will be given for free to the farmers. So they can enhance productivity and to increase the food safety issues on island. So it's a lot I can see tonight, I can see until midnight when I'm on agriculture, because that's what I am passionate about. But um the 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 Kalinog chief mentioned about the boats, yeah, we need to respond. We are currently constructing fifty for boats, but these boats already have beneficiaries, there are persons who lost boats after Hurricane Maria. And the boats are not replaced, so now we have a facility, we are constructing them. But it was in a separate project we're doing now, and we are looking for beneficiaries. The names are all tagged on them already, so we are ruling a component. Before that, we had a component where we replaced engines, the old boat motor engines, about hundred and five of them for persons who opted for engines instead of boats. So it's not a project that we have now to call for proposal. It's a project that we're only now to support the beneficiaries and that already listed for the boats, okay? No, no, that no, no, that's a national project. And that's person who lost boat, let's say, along the west coast, and the fisheries department will have the records of them, so they are the beneficiaries, okay? No, well, well, I won't know the 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 department, but I'm not aware of this project at all, at all, at all, okay? And I don't think the the minister, specifically the fisheries, is aware either. So so it's something we can talk this after, can give me somebody else, okay? Thank you very much. Okay, so I addressed that early on, the 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 fertilizer was meant for the persons who were given the tissue culture plant. So if you were not given the plants, you would not have been given fertilizer. However, last year December, not last year, year before December. We we received a consignment of five thousand bags from from Morocco and redistributed around the island. And as we speak, we have some containers on the water coming down, they're floating in transit. We've added shuttle, we've a similar amount, the consignment, so we'll ensure that it'll be taken care of, okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. As you can see, we've done our best to address all of the questions that have been raised. Um we initially planned to end at eight. Um however, the our prime minister has has given us the opportunity to have just a final round. I haven't seen any more hands, but just in case, we have one or two people who would like to raise a comment or question. So we'll take three final individuals, I see we have one person. Um two here and one, two here, one at the back, and we'll take one on this side. So we'll take four final individuals, please stand.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening to the Cabinet of Ministers. My name is Catherine Laura, I'm from Atkinson. I'm happy this evening to hear that PM gave us some good news. I was one who always had a phone in my minister's back every time I attended a constituency meeting. Rehousing on Atkinson and Antriso, so I'm happy this evening I can give him a little break. But my issue is healthcare directed to the Minister of Health. Um honestly, the Kalinago territory, Atkinson, we need a mini hospital. Because sometimes you go to your health center and your district nurse will say. I cannot refer you to the Marriott hospital, I have to refer you to Wesley, which is much further. Sometimes you do not have a vehicle, the ambulances is not available. Sometimes, if that ambulance is in Roseau, you can have a death on your hand if it's an emergency. For me, I believe we need a mini hospital in this area constituency. Because oftentimes, we go to Wesley. When you reach Wesley, you don't have a ride, you have to stay there until you can maybe get somebody, you have elders, you have children, you have babies taken to that area. I mean, come on, this is a little too much for us in this area. And our ambulances, when Cassava is done, Marriott has to be called, or if Marriott is not there, Cassava have to come. I mean, within that space of time, we can have people dying on our hands, I mean, God forbid. So it would be good that we can get a mini hospital, even though we cannot get a health district as promised before. But a mini hospital would do us good in that area. I mean, I want to commend our nurses, they do their extra best, they try their very best. Sometimes they too have to, you know, leave what they're doing and go with the patients because sometimes it is just too much and it's overwhelming. Um another issue, I want to thank my minister of agriculture this evening, I see him trying to answer Ms Burton. I work with the Division of Agriculture in the Kalinago Territory, the East Region, so I know what Ms Burton is speaking about. On another hand, I want to say to her, if you were not approved under the banana and planting project, you would not have received fertilizer. And the lease has been cut, it cannot be from our office, it was done by the World Bank staff. So I mean, some of the farmers, they know that, but they still pinpoint that the ministers or the officers are not doing what they're supposed to do. I want to say thank you to my minister under the S S L R project, which was done two years ago. Cassava farmers and cassava producers received equipments and all the facilities were um. Equipped under the S S L R U N D P project. To a day, we only have one cassava factory, which is operational in the whole constituency, and we have three cassava facilities. Only one, if you come to the Kalinago territory, that is the only cassava factory you can go and get a pungorfarin or a cassava bread. We have some people who have benefited and they sit and do nothing and say the government is not doing. So tonight, I want to say thank you to Minister Frederick. Because it's through him, through the U N D P project, under the S S L R, we got these equipments. And I would like to see more being done with the cassava facilities in our area. If you do not want to use the facility, lease it or get somebody else to run the facility. Minister Grant, I have a concern in the Antriso area, Antriso bus stop. The level of water flow in that area is a lot, a lot of water. From under the big rock to the Antriso bus stop. I saw we put some little slipper drains, and when you see it rains. The people living below the road level are flooded most times. Madame Chairman and our council, we have visited, we have tried, we have spoken to some of the road supervisors. But when it rains, it is disaster. So we need deep drains. So the water can flow properly because them little slipper now working. Please do something about it. Another issue I have is um, we have given greenhouses to. Certainly individuals in the Kalinago space, and my minister can respond to that. We have one sitting at the back of his office, which is unoccupied. Minister, I think we need to reallocate that greenhouse because if we say farm to table. Give it to somebody else who needs the greenhouse and who can make use of that greenhouse. Because too many times, I think we blame and we say, oh, we're not getting this, we're not getting that. I've been working with the Ministry of Agriculture for the past five years, and I can say tonight. That a lot of our farmers here have benefited under all project, U N D P. Before they get the barrel and if down to the boots, they sell it. And then they come here tonight and they will tell you, we want fertilizer, we want a fork, we want a speed. I will defend when it is right and I will say when it is wrong. So tonight, I want to say to my minister of agriculture, Kalinago, some of them are well taken care of. But some of them is greed. Some of them is greed. And I say with no remorse, because I work in the office, I know, they come, they sign my documents. And by the time they reach where they're going, the barrel is for sale. So thank you, PM. As I said before, the people of Atkinson, we await. The good times and the good news because we have been taken for the black sheep of the constituency for too long. With that, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you very much. Um there was a hand to the back, do we have a mic? Oh, okay. No, we will come to. We have two mics, so we'll take the lady who is already standing and then we will come to you.
Good evening to everybody, our prime minister and everybody else, welcome to the Kalinago territory. I will not live here tonight, and I decided not to live tonight without making my points. However, I have three points. Number one, I represent my elders on the Dominica Council on Asian Board. I am a board member. And I am also a caregiver on the net for modern tenures. And see, I am I am standing here, I'm listening to people asking for raise for beautification. They did get it already, so what about the what about the caregivers who have the bed ridens? And we work without glove, we have to provide our own gloves, everything that we have to work with. So we do want raise, no less or see. So it doesn't just go for one set, it is for everybody. Number two. Number two is that we have a large amount of elderly senior citizens in the Kalinago territory. Now, we have to take some of them to the health center. Where is the money coming from to pay for the hires? Now, when I have a saw or something, I ask the caregiver, because I am trained in caring for the wounds, it is left to me to do. Now, I have to take them to the health center every day to ask that be, how is that right? They doesn't have roads to go to their homes, not even a proper home that they have to live in, they are, most of them are forgotten. And then they are only left in the care of their caregivers. Oh, so then, I am saying, having our senior citizens go into the Bay Health Center or Maro Bay Health Center or Atkinson Health Center under the K I R eleven. That already flattening already, doesn't have a vehicle, they cannot afford to pay for a vehicle to take them back and forth to their homes. My question is, what is being done to assist these senior citizens? I'll go down to my grave talking on their behalf, I am their voice. What I'm what I have decided, and I've said to myself, Theresa Frederick, is that. Can I have a vehicle not available for these people to take them to the health center and back to their little homes? Do you have to go to the health center nearly every day just to check their blood pressure, just to take their sugar? By the time they reach the health center, pressure up already, and these people are hungry. So we need to put something in place for them. Mister PM, my good friend, I think you can help me out on that situation. And then, the other one is, if you cannot give us a vehicle for the Salibia police station, but at least we should have one closer to us. The policemen, they are there to my, pick on their behalf because they are the ones that I call when I have my dementia clients, I cannot find that I have to go to the bushes to get them, I called on them. They are my security and then I stand to defend the Salibia police because we need a vehicle, we are desperately in need of it, especially during the time of disaster. And leaving one policeman at the Salibia police station, that has been going on for a while, it's been going on for a while, they have to close the Salibia police station to go. Then as soon as they go on their duty to arrest somebody or do something else. Here comes another one. I am not going to be no security not getting paid to do it, you know, to watch police station and say, "Pass an eye for me." No, we have to get serious, that is serious business, my life can be at risk. Whoever can help, help. Tukponka crash, it's not the policeman alone that crashing vehicles, everybody crashing. So, thank you very much, raise up, leave a pain, and a police now, mercy.
Okay, thank you very much, please go ahead.
Hi, good evening, good evening, Prime Minister, the Honorable Dr. Skerritt and all of the government officials who are here this evening. And Madame Chair, thank you for hosting this really very important meeting in the Kalinago Territory. I personally sincerely appreciate the opportunity to be able to meet with our government, meet with the officials and to raise our concerns. Prime Minister Skerritt, I think you'd be happy to know that we have started reconstruction of Ayewasi and we look forward again to hosting you one of these days when we are finished with the current construction that we are undertaking right now. So we're reinvesting in the territory. I know that you took major political blows when you actually helped financially with the first development of Ayewasi. There are people here in this very room and elsewhere in the territory who essentially said, "What the hell are you doing giving Mr. Hill all that money?" Every local election and every national election, this is an issue that is discussed by everybody and you take a lot of blows for it. I got a lot of respect for you for even bringing it up here tonight. I have three major issues that I would like to address. And the first one is the bus stop, which the chief spoke about. I have been involved in this issue for over six years from the inception of this road construction project with the World Bank and the consultations which you mentioned rightfully. I have been involved in it. During those consultations, we specifically asked the World Bank to design bus stops that were traditional and culturally sensitive to this community. I was part of that conversation with the World Bank in those consultations. So it is to my great surprise that I am driving down the road at Crefish River and I run into Mr. Kali, or Kali, who is the contractor and essentially asking what's going on with the bus stop at Point. To which he responded, "There is no bus stop scheduled to be built at Point." Now, the Point bus stop is maybe the oldest bus stop in the territory. That is next to the, I've known that bus stop there for as long as I've been, since that road has been built. So I was really surprised when Mr. Kali said to me, "There is no bus stop scheduled for that location." I immediately called my parliamentary representative and informed him of what Mr. Kali had just said to me. To which he also was surprised that at one of the major intersections where a bus stop has always been, that the Public Works and the road developers and whoever decided that there was no bus stop going there. But they have been building bus stops in other areas where there were never bus stops before. At that point in time, I got involved with the whole discussion of bus stops. I have spoken to both of the contractors who were building the bus stops. I have showed them a model of what a bus stop in the Kalinago architectural scheme should look like. They have gone, they have visited it. They have assured me that there is no difficulty in building that bus stop. It really should not cost anything more than the bus stops they are already building. It probably costs less. The fact is that I find it really surprising, Mister Prime Minister, that with the intervention of my parliamentary representative who I called about it, the chief who has intervened, there are other community members who have intervened, very prominent. The fact that this is an intersection to the most prominent historic tourism site in the territory that we would not build a bus stop there in that type of architecture. So I want to urge you urgently, sincerely, I am begging you, to please intervene on this behalf because we need a bus stop at that intersection, yes? Mister Prime Minister, I totally respect everything you have said and I am thankful for the work on the road. It is an enormous investment in this community. I am eternally thankful for that. I think the Kalinago people are eternally thankful for that. But small things sometimes have significant impacts and I am simply bringing it up. Mister Prime Minister, I agree that, I am not arguing against that at all. Well, I'm not saying that, no, I'm not saying that, Mister Prime Minister, I'm not saying that. I'm not saying that, I am not saying that. Okay, thank you, I appreciate that. Thank you, I appreciate that. Okay, secondly, Mister Prime Minister, I want to support my classmate, Mister August, who raised the issue of the secondary school. I just attended a meeting in the territory recently and one of the things that was, I was totally shocked is that there is a huge divide between the children from Sineku and the children in the Salibia school. There is this animosity, this competition, that they are not being treated fairly and this is something that has happened before and the Ministry of Education, I think, is aware of it. So yes, there's bullying right here going on between the Sineku children and children from the Salibia area. So, I think when we raise these issues, maybe we have to look at solutions also. So I want to say that I support the conversation on the secondary school for the Kalinago Territory. It will not cost the government any additional money in terms of infrastructure because as you rightly said, the government is making a significant investment in a school for Sineku. A major investment. The question is, what is the most appropriate use of that facility? Can we put it to better use than just a primary school? I will give you some statistics which I researched. There's 110 children in the Sineku school and there are six teachers. Eight teachers, I think. There are 47 students in the Salibia school and six teachers. Plus they have NEP assistants, monitors and plus the principals and mentors, mentors. So if we added up the students, it's 157 students, we have 14 teachers, that's 12 students per teacher. Plus the NEP mentors and plus the principals. So, what we have been doing is is separating the resources that we have for the children. So, once we have built this beautiful school in Sineku, the children in Sineku will now have access to technology, to all of the other things. The students from here for the children in Atkinson and the children in Concord will not have access to those. I think we have to bring our students together and let all of them have access to all of the educational resources that are available in the territory. I think that would be fair and equitable for all of the children who live here. In addition, this separation of our schools is causing a major problem in the Kalinago Territory. Students are growing up in Sineku and don't know that they have family in Crefish River. All of the violence originated from Crefish River. The children no longer know that their families exist and that they have relationships with them and have, you know... So I think, Mister Prime Minister, I heard you say that you're willing to engage in the discussion and I'm looking forward to that discussion. Thirdly, and I am going to close, I realize you're telling me to shut up, so I'm going to close. Most, and this is coming from my heart. Mister Prime Minister, you addressed the issue of diseases, these comical, non-comical diseases in the community. I want to address the issue of alcoholism in the Kalinago Territory. This morning, when I left my house, I needed somebody to carry some blocks for me. I drove up the road, the first three young men that I approached to ask them to come and carry some blocks for me, they were all drunk at eight o'clock in the morning. We have an existential disease that is threatening this population and it is called alcoholism. Unless we as a community get together and do something about it, we are losing an entire generation of young men and young women too. It is time for the council, the chief, the parrot to ban this poison that is coming into the territory. This thing that we call wabi or whatever, it is poisoning our children, it is poisoning our men and our women. The shopkeepers need to stop selling this wabi and this poison to our people. We are destroying our community and alcoholism is doing it. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. I realize we are over time because we are getting very restless. So I would like to give the Prime Minister an opportunity to respond and to close up. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you very much. We have taken note of the comments and suggestions that have been made. Clearly, there are some things that among yourselves in the community that you need to discuss and work on. But where the government has its responsibility, we certainly will fall upon those. I want to thank everybody for coming. I believe it was a very constructive engagement. I think in some time, there will need to be a follow-up and a follow-through. But we'll continue engagement and have the dialogue and the conversations that we suggested on some of the points and so forth. But I would really like to participate, so we've got a lot more I could say, but time is on my side tonight. And that with some things that we have to be cautious against and careful about what we're promoting. Very careful. Because at the end of the day, our children from the Kalinago Territory will have to go to the state college. They'll have to go to university. And we have to promote integration. Obviously, each of us having our own identity, but we have to promote integration. I studied in the south of America, the southern part of America, where racism is rampant. Mississippi, the old south. You know, you have to integrate as a world, the world is a place where, you know, we all are different and but we have to assimilate, we have to work together. And separating ourselves is not going to be the answer to our challenges. This is a globalized world, there are no boundaries in the world anymore. Understand? And so, that's my caution to us. We must be, we have to come up with some very concrete positions as to why we're promoting those things, you know? And and if somebody gives us a bowl of rice, we cannot say it's missing one grain and not pay attention to the bowl of rice before us. And I, for one, I'm a politician and I will not allow anybody to water down what the government is doing in Dominico by bringing up vexatious issues and seeking to set aside the investments. There's a deliberate intent by some to do that. That we lose sight of the big picture and we're talking about little things that can be worked out as we go along. But we must not speak as if we do not appreciate or we're trying to throw cold water on these investments by talking about some things that can be negotiated as we go along. It's not for me that lesson is, it's for our children. Because we as parents are never able to provide all they need. And back in the days, you get a half a pencil, you're lucky. You should take a pencil and tie it with a rope and tie it to your belt hole. You could exercise begin too. You understand what I'm saying? So, we must not believe that life is what it is, has always been. And we must be careful as individuals that we do not give thanks to what we have and what we're receiving and talk about things that we have yet to receive. And as you know, I can stand and defend this government anywhere politically and I will defend the attempts at trying to throw political cold water. If you want to advance your politics, then talk about what you're doing, what you're doing and what you intend to do. And not try to throw cold water, what this government have been doing. Because there's no government before I became a Prime Minister of this country that has paid attention to the Kalinago people like I've done, none. That's the reality. We were forgotten people. We couldn't walk across the streets, we'd have been chastised and maligned. We were abandoned. And so, we must be careful that we ourselves don't recognise those things so that we can build upon what we have done and what we're doing and allow people with the motivations to come and to subtly and indirectly throw cold water in what is happening. And so I urge all of us here to gather against this. But I will stand in the gap and ensure that we can speak about these things. It's been a wonderful night. I look forward to the continued conversation and I will thank the parrot for hosting us. I will thank the parrot for hosting us. Um, we'll continue working to deliver to the people in this constituency. And this government is completely committed both at the government level and the political level. And of course, I, I look forward to visiting Atkinson on Wednesday next week, God's willing, to, to speak on Atkinson's specific issues. Um, I see you next Wednesday. Let us go home safely. God bless our country, God bless your families. Thank you very much.
And thank you very much, the Honorable Prime Minister and to all of you who have attended this evening. We do have some light refreshments, I believe, on the outside. So please note, and our next town hall meeting will be in Colley Hall. Um, you will be advised of the date.